Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Ventura County's Forum for Candidates Running for the Ojai City Council. There are two candidates running for a single seat. For those of you who weren't here for the other Candidates' Forum, my name is Pat Essick, and I am co-president of the League of Women Voters, and I will be moderating this evening's forum. The League of Women Voters never supports a candidate or a party. We try to remain neutral, and we would expect the same for you, please. If you will hold your applause or comments till the very end, we would appreciate it for the fairness to the candidates and so they can answer more questions. Before we get started, I'd like to take a few moments and describe the process of this evening's forum. It's being filmed, and I'd ask you, please, not to take pictures or any recordings. You will be able to see this on cable, on local cable, soon. Let's see. Well, that's good. As you came in this evening, you were offered cards and pencils for any questions that you would like to submit to the candidates during the question-and-answer portion, and it's still time. You can still write questions. If you are writing a question, please make sure that you let us know if it's for the city council or for the mayor. We don't want to confuse the questions. We will be having a mayoral Candidates' Forum after this, but it won't be for a while. When you're ready with a question, just raise your hand, and someone will come by and pick it up. And if you need more paper, they'll deliver it to you. Thank you. Okay. Please feel free to multiple, submit multiple questions, and our volunteers will have extra cards for you all throughout the event. One thing that's important is print neatly, and please only print one question per card. Our question sorters will group your questions by topic, and we will do our best to get to as many of them as we can. Each candidate will be given a minute and a half, since we have only two candidates, and we drew order. So Souza gets to go first. She's going to give, she gets a minute and a half for her opening statement, and then Chris will do the same, and we'll just alternate throughout. And at the end, Chris, you'll get to have the first closing statement. Okay. Before I start, I just want to tell you a little bit about the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters was founded when the Nineteenth Amendment was passed by suffragettes, and we're very pleased to have the vote. We take it seriously. The organization was founded to help inform voters and to inform the public and keep them involved in government. We're pleased to put on things like this Candidates' Forum just for that purpose, so that you can be informed and make good choices and have good government. We would like, before you leave today, I'd like you to see what we have to offer on the back table. We have pros and cons that are carefully researched. If you're having any trouble with those 17 propositions on the ballot, they're of interest to you, and we'd like to encourage you to join us. It takes lots of people to put all this on. This is our 10th through 11th Candidates' Forum throughout the county, so we're pleased to be here. We will now begin with the candidates' opening statements, and we will, you'll have a minute and a half. And when we get to the last half-minute, they're going to hold up 30-second sign, and then when they hold up the red one, time to stop. Okay? So, we will begin. Souza.
Good evening. I'm Souza Francina. I am a former member of the Ojai City Council, and I had the honor of serving as your mayor from the year, in the year 2000. I've lived in the Ojai Valley for 60 years. During my term on the city council, I brought forward several sustainability plans. I've been involved in the subject of sustainable cities for over, I would say, about 40 years. I'm a prolific writer, researcher, and I bring all of that to the table. I put forth the Ojai Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. I'm probably best known for that. I've attended countless hours of city meetings, and even when my term ended, I continued to be involved. I served on the Complete Streets Committee, and I continue to attend council meetings and pay attention to what was going on in the Ojai Valley. In the course of this evening, I'm hoping that my opponent, you know, this is a very unusual situation. I think this is the first time in the history of Ojai that we've had two candidates for an empty seat. But I'm hoping that in the course of the evening, my opponent will answer the question that I think a lot of people have. He originally came into the race because he was interested in promoting the legality of long-term, of short-term vacation rentals, and everyone has noticed that that is absent from his candidate statement and from all his literature. So I'm hoping respectfully that he'll address why that is not included in his candidate statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending and investing your time today. My name's Chris Gardner, and I've lived in Ojai not nearly as long as Souza, 15 years, but my wife is probably right up there with Souza. She's been here her whole life, and we raised our family here. A good indication of that is when we decided we'd go buy yard signs. My wife and campaign manager, over a couple glasses of wine, wrote down 180 names from memory to place those signs in. So we're, we're pretty vested in the, in the city. I'm a former engineer from Berkeley, and I became CEO of a technology company in Camarillo, a startup called The Test Semiconductor. The company was sold about 18 months ago, so now I'm either unemployed or retired, depending on your point of view. I'm not a serial politician. I'm a concerned citizen. Some people, as Souza's pointed out, associate me with short-term rentals, but that's not what I'm about. I'm about competent, transparent, inclusive, and respectful government that works for everybody. I'm about addressing our issues, big issues. Water, diversifying the economy out of tourist areas, senior and affordable housing, parks, permitting process, and our movie theater, among other things. We've got some tough challenges. We need a council that's accountable and leaders that can solve tough problems, not create them. I have skills and experience to make our city function more effectively. I'll work with both sides respectfully to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, our first question will go to Chris. I'm going to get this straightened out. It's not too hard. There's only two. Okay. Do you believe City Hall and City Council reaches out enough and understands what most Ojai residents need, or do they seem to pay more attention to only those who have time to raise issues at city council meetings?
That's a very good question. It's actually one of the reasons I got involved in running for council. You know, my experience, which is, you know, probably, again, mostly over the 18 months, is that the council responds pretty heavily to what I've called "the noisy few." And the noisy few show up at, you know, all the issues, and they're on both sides of many issues. You go to a council meeting, and people show up, and they have stickers on their shirts, and they're, you know, in favor of clean air, or clean water, or non-STRs, or pro-STRs, or whatever the issue is. And I do think that the council, rather than reaching out to the entire community of 7,500 people, responds overwhelmingly to the noise of those 20 or 30 people who can fit in our chamber. We saw it just two weeks ago with leaf blowers, where there was a direction pending. That direction was completely reversed by, you know, a group that showed up with their stickers. Now, you know, I don't know where I am leaf blowers, honestly, but I am against a lot of decisions being made in back-room deals with a lack of transparency, driven by people who even go as far to text our council members during public meetings on what to think and how to vote. That, I think, is wrong.
Okay. So, Souza, your turn.
Say the question again.
Sure. It's pretty long. Do you believe City Hall and City Council reaches out enough and understands what most Ojai residents need, or do they seem to pay more attention to only those who have time to raise issues at the city council meetings?
Well, I've been watching the city council, I would say closely, for about 20 years. And as, you know, there's five members. Some of them reach out more than others. I can only speak for myself. When I was on the council, I listened, I was very involved with the community at that point. My children, I was still raising my children. And my work has always been in Ojai, so I connected with, you know, I have a yoga center. I went to the Gables and taught. I went into nursing homes. I was very in touch with the community, I feel. But as in, I think there's, I've seen a whole mix of people in the city council. Whenever there's something that is of personal interest to the community, they show up. So I, to me, I've seen different groups of people, not just one group of people. As far as the leaf blowers goes, I think everybody here must know that I've been opposing leaf blowers, I think, since 1992, when I lived in a leaf blower vortex. So enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, next question. This is for you, Souza, to start with. Okay. If Ojai is to remain a small town, as some people hope, why do you think people believe it's important to increase school enrollment, since that will increase the population, the traffic, and put more demand on local resources?
Oh, I was hoping you would ask that question, because that was asked at the school board. Okay, so, there, the questionnaire is thinking that if we have more families in Ojai, well, I would, I don't see it that way. I don't see that families are the cause of increased traffic, or any of the, I forget all the problems they listed. I would say that what, those problems are due when tourism is out of balance. It's not local families that are causing those problems. I don't, I, maybe you should ask the question again, because it doesn't make any sense to me.
Do you want me to read it again?
If you would, please.
Yeah. If Ojai is to remain a small town, as some people hope, why do you think people believe it's important to increase school enrollment, since that will increase the population, the traffic, and put more demand on local resources?
Okay. I don't think it will increase the population. It would change the demographics of the, of the population. Thank you.
Okay. And so, that same question for you. Do you want me to read it?
No, I got it. I got it. Thank you. So, if you actually look at the population of Ojai over the last 15 years, it has declined. Not as much, however, as the population of our schools. If you look at that trend, you know, we're down pretty substantially. I think it's over 20% over the last 15 years, but more than half of that decline, in fact, about 70% of that decline was 2000 to 2007. In fact, K through six attendance is actually starting to climb, so that's a good indicator of where we might be going. Now, I think going to the point of the question, I would agree with Souza that it's an issue of demographics, right? We need to be very, very careful that we have, and avoid, a population that ages in place, right? That we can't attract new families, and we can't continue to even maintain our population as we age. I think one of the challenges there in, in attracting new families to schools is that there really are less and less non-tourist jobs. We need to do a better, better job creating an economy with clean, you know, inter, internet companies, clean tech companies, et cetera. So those families actually have work to do here in Ojai, and they can sustain themselves and support themselves here.
Okay. Next.
Nobody's paying attention.
Next question. Sorry, I'll have to look at you, won't I? Okay. What Ojai Valley causes or organizations have you been involved with by donating time or money, and when? That one is addressed to you, Chris.
So numerous. You know, you go back, you know, multiple years, we've been, my wife and I have been involved in a number of organizations. Probably the top of the list, we were on the Board, Board of Advisors, for a local charity called Changing Tides. It's been around about six years. We've donated tremendous amount of time, and, you know, I'm not going to comment on money, but we're, we're very big donators of money to a lot of the local causes. So, you know, that's one side, and whether it's, you know, the hospital, or, you know, the local non, I can't remember the name of the group, but it's for disadvantaged children. We're involved with that. We're now part of the Nifty 50 for the museum. So we've got a pretty long record of putting time and, and money into local organizations. I think more interesting, or at least potentially as interesting, is I've spent a lot of time locally now with some of the businesses. So I helped write the business plan and fund a local startup here called Desk Yogi. I think it's a perfect example. It's a mirror of Lynda.com. It's a perfect example of the kind of companies we need here. There's another one that I'm hoping to get involved with, which is Boku, who's a Ventura company run by a local Ojai family. They would love to be here in Ojai, and we need to give them some support and some help to get here.
Thank you. Okay. Souza, do you want me to read that again?
Yes.
Okay. What Ojai Valley causes, organization, and/or organizations have you been involved with by donating time or money, and when?
Well, when my children were growing up, I volunteered in the schools, of course. That would be 1970s, 80s, 90s. And in 1992, I think I was the first, among the first Ojai living treasures. And that involved, when I was elected to be a living treasure, I volunteered every Friday. The kids from Matilla would come to my yoga center, and it was amazing. There'd be like 30 kids. You could see them walking towards the yoga center a mile away. And that went on for at least a year, but after that, the kids, you know, I gave scholarships so they could get PE credit. Oh, thank you very much. You mean, all this time, they couldn't hear me? Okay. So, and then in 1994, I helped to start Ojai's first Ojai Valley, Ojai Bicycle Coalition, and I must have donated countless hours to that, you know. And I'm still doing that. I'm still involved with the bike train, riding the kids to school. And then I volunteered countless hours on Ojai Day. I was involved with the first bicycle parking, Ojai Green Coalition causes, maybe that was even pre-Ojai Green Coalition, you know, sustainability causes. And is my time up? Did you wave that thing?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're watching. Sorry.
You've got to keep holding it up.
All right.
You can't just put it down.
All right. All right. So this one is to start with you, Souza, and it is, "Share your vision of Ojai today, tomorrow, and in the future."
Oh, I love that. Share my vision of Ojai today, tomorrow, and into the future. Well, I would start by saying the obvious, that we want to preserve the beautiful, small town that we have here, and we have to balance, you know, I lived in Ojai when, I remember when the, when the local stores serviced the people that lived here. So I come from, from an era where I saw a small town that was not overridden with, with tourists. So the challenge now is to balance tourism and the needs of the community. And that is my, my number-one priority, is making sure that community comes first. And that would involve providing housing. I mean, I see Ojai as the most incredible, Ojai has the most incredible opportunity to be a model, green, sustainable community, and everything that involves. That would include wise water standards. It would include, the whole valley, in my opinion, should use permaculture techniques. The valley should be permeable. There are, and one of my things I'm researching is, you know, people are actually taking up concrete and cement, and because they want to, so the water running into the ocean, we want to have a community that is, that you, that maintains, that knows how to take care of their water. Oh, there's your stop.
Thank you. I have to stop.
Wait, I'm just getting started. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Your turn, Chris. Do you want me to read it again?
No, I've got it. Thank you. Yeah, so, I think vision is an important aspect. When I was a CEO, I always got the question, "What's the vision for your company?" And my standard answer, and I think it applies even more so in a community, it's that it's, it's not really about my vision. My job, I think, on council is to channel the vision of 7,500 people from Ojai. You know, I think my slogan is "Keeping Ojai the Place We Love," because I think the reason we all live here is because we do love this place. And we have a lot of disagreements on what I would call the small stuff. You know, you can name them, right? And again, we have the groups on each side that love to fight, but the great majority of the people that aren't the 200 or 300 that are on either side of an argument are pretty darn happy with this town, and they're pretty darn happy with what all the citizens of Ojai have done to protect this town over the last 30, 40 years, and make it what it is today, which is unique. So I think my view would be, the vision is to keep that path, to keep listening to the citizens. We obviously all want clean air. We want clean water. We want open spaces. But we have a lot of serious problems. We want clean water. We might not have any water in three years. So we have some challenges, and we need some people that can not only create a vision, but can take that vision and actually execute it in a way that works for all of us.
All right. Thank you. This one will start with you, Chris, and the question is, I don't think it's going to take a minute and a half, but you'll decide. Would you recuse yourself from participating in a vote on a matter in which you have a financial interest or the appearance of a conflict to your constituents?
Yeah, that's, and that's a good question. I'm glad it was asked, actually, because I can clarify. This has been asked before. And this obviously gets to the short-term rental issue, where I and my wife were an owner of a licensed short-term rental until the ban took effect recently. And so the question is asked, as a result, if there was some kind of vote on short-term rental, because I owned one, would I need to recuse myself? Well, the reality is, today, I don't own one, and I've actually talked to lawyers at the FPPC who make these kinds of decisions, and they concurred with my view that I would not legally have to recuse myself for a conflict of interest. Now, having said that, I think if it came up, if there was some sort of vote, either on, you know, this initiative or something else, I'd look to the city attorney. I'd look to also the other city council members and get their opinion. And if there was a strong opinion that it was even suggested by the majority that I do that, I would be open to recusing myself. And certainly, if there were a conflict of interest that was required, I would do so, of course.
Thank you. Souza?
I would not only recuse myself if there was a, an obvious conflict of interest, I would recuse myself if there was the appearance of a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Souza, this next one will start with you. Can you name three of the plans that are included in the city's general plan?
Land use, traffic, I want to say air quality, but I don't think that's it. In the city's land use general plan, housing, land use, traffic.
Okay.
Yeah. To the best, my recollection.
Okay. Is that your, you're finished?
Yeah. So, is that, is that what you're asking?
I'll read it again, if you want to know.
Okay, read it again.
Can you tell, or can you name three of the plans that are included in the city's general plan?
Yeah, I think I covered it.
All right. Thank you. I can't answer that, so, okay.
Well, I guess I could cheat and say the same three, right? It's kind of an interesting question. I mean, obviously, the housing element is probably the most important one right now, and I actually think that one includes a lot of the traffic studies, et cetera. So I'm not quite sure if traffic and safety or the others, but I, no, no coaching from the audience.
No comments from the audience, yes.
So I'll just leave it at that.
And to, I mean, land use would cover the way, would cover zoning. So you're not asking for the details, you're just...
I just read it exactly the way it's written, and I can't clarify it anymore, because I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Let me see. So that would be your turn to start first. And how do you feel about new construction in Ojai, given our current water drought situation? Chris?
Well, water's a complex issue, and there was a vote on this, obviously, and it's come up since that vote, a 45-day emergency moratorium. You know, I'm kind of in the middle on that one. I would agree, actually, with the majority of the council, that a 45-day moratorium in a community that puts out half a dozen permits for new building each year is kind of, it's not going to have any impact whatsoever on the actual water draw, which is the problem. On the other hand, I've heard, I think, a good argument for folks who say, "We have a crisis. We need to act like we have a crisis." And sometimes it sends the wrong message to, you know, even if it doesn't make a lot of sense, to put, to not put rules in, in place for that kind of optics, if you will, to give people a view that this really is a problem. I think at the end of the day, there are much, much bigger things that our council should be working on with regards to water than a 45-day moratorium that is really not going to make a difference, other than communicate a message.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you read the question again, please?
For you, Souza. How do you feel, how, I think it says, "How do you feel about new construction in Ojai, given our current water drought situation?"
There are projects waiting in the wings that, to me, merit a 45-day moratorium at minimum, until there's clarity, and the planning commission is, the, the city council looked at the documents for wise water standards. It was on the city council agenda at 10:15 Tuesday night, when everyone was pretty tired. And after about 45 minutes of discussion, they sent it back to the planning commission, and I got the feeling, right or wrong, that, you know, there, there's time, that there would be a greater sense of urgency if there had been a moratorium in place. I think the moratorium is appropriate when we have, you know, stage-three drought, and as a way to protect us, because we don't know what projects are going to come before the council, and a lot of us don't know projects that are in the works, though they haven't, you know, they're not made public yet. So I would be for a 45-day moratorium.
Okay.
I mean, which can then be extended, I might add.
All right.
Was that the answer to the question, or, that's, that's, you know, I have a little of trouble, the, or new, you said "new construction." New construction means new construction.
Right.
And I take that to mean commercial construction.
They didn't qualify.
Yeah, they didn't qualify, but I'm, I'm speaking of commercial construction. I'm not talking about, well, possibly a house, too.
Yeah, sorry.
It depends. Thank you.
So, our next question will start with you, Souza. How can we promote civility in our public discussions?
Well, I think we should create a lot more, a more pleasant environment at City Hall, starting with those harsh lights. Anybody that sits under those lights for four hours becomes short-tempered. That's just for starters. I think the city council members need to model that kind, you know, that respectful behavior. I'm not so sure that I've seen, you know, from my perspective, I haven't really seen, you know, rude behavior. You know, sometimes people get a little excited, and I think that the mayor and the city council members can handle that. I mean, there's probably a lot more. I mean, if I had my druthers, everyone would do yoga before they came in, so they'd come in all relaxed, and they wouldn't be serving coffee, which hypes everybody up, but that's another story.
Okay. Thank you. How about you, Chris? How can we promote civility in our public discussions?
Well, I think it's a really important question, and if, if you go to the videotape of the forum that was done by Rotary about a month ago, and look at my clothes, you'll see that that's all I talked about, was that it's, you know, we have some issues that we're going to have to face. Some of them are tough. We just sat through the school board thing, and there's going to be discussions with school closures and this and that. And people have to understand that you can be on the other side of an issue, and the person on the other side of the issue is not an evil person, or a bad person, or a greedy person, or a slimy person, or some of the other things I've, I've read. They're just someone with whom you disagree. And, you know, one of... And, you know, one of the transparency issues in council that I've been challenged with is that often, the council is not responsive to people with whom they disagree. They feel they're being attacked, and sometimes they are. So, I, I would just say, we need to put things in perspective, right? At the end of the day, we're a community. We have to work together. We have to live together. You know, I hope to be here for another 30 or 40 years, and through this campaign, my goal is to not make a bunch of enemies, it's to make a bunch of friends. And I would compliment Souza on, you know, while things have gotten a little interesting in some aspects, I think we, as candidates, have kind of been above that. And I would ask all the supporters out there to, to model that behavior.
Thank you. Okay, so, the next question is for you, Chris. Candidates for city council and mayor, this is going to be directed to the mayors, too. Ojai has lost over 1,000 jobs in the last 15 years. Service jobs have increased 50% in that time. What is the position, what is your position on attracting more living wage jobs to Ojai? Please share specifics, if you can.
Yeah, and this is, I think this is one of our key issues, and I mentioned it in my opening, for Ojai. We have lost a lot of jobs. I think 27% of the non-tourist jobs is the number over the last 15 years. A lot of those are in manufacturing, some of those things we honestly didn't want, right? Some are in, some of the dirtier manufacturing, like oil and whatnot, that, that we need to be careful about. On the other hand, what that's doing is it's hollowing out our economy. You know, we have more and more service jobs, and we have more and more service jobs that are weekend-dependent. Go talk to some of the restaurant owners. They're busy, busy, busy on a Saturday, and they're dead, dead, dead on a Tuesday. There's not enough business people having lunch to let them sustain themselves. How do they hire 40, keep 40 people on staff for the weekend and need five during the week? It's very difficult. So, I think there are areas, you know, IT, you know, I'd love to put an incubator fund together, and let's go find somebody who doesn't like the way sprinklers work, like me. I think they're the worst technology on the planet. And let's create some of these companies here, focused on the things that we care about in Ojai, and see if we can grow them to be the next ITI, or the next Lynda.com. And then, if they are marginally successful and they can make it, let's not scare them out of here with parking moratoriums and other things that feel good, but in the long run, hurt us.
Sorry, I have to stop you. Thank you. Okay, it's your turn now. Souza, want me to read it again?
Yes. No, 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 it's fine. I, I was curious where the questionnaire got the, the figure of 1,000 jobs, but that's probably irrelevant. It just so happens, I did look at available jobs in Ojai today, because I had a feeling this question might come up, and there are, there are jobs available. The thing is, you know, when you live in a small town, you can't, you have, you've got to face the fact that you can't, you can't have everything, okay? Ventura is only a 25-minute commute, and, I mean, one of the things that we need to look at is are all the people commuting to one place, you know, adding to the traffic. And if that's the case, like, to the government center, I talked to one person who had the idea that all those people could work, you know, we could have made the bowling alley into offices, for, you know, for people that are commuting to one place, because with today's technology, why should they be commuting, a lot of these people? I agree with Chris. Of course, we need, you know, more environmentally sound jobs. But, you know, you just can't have, the, you know, in Ventura, we have factory jobs. And if our schools succeed, you know, we have schools, we have, we're no, we could have a lot more, this is a retirement community, we could have more jobs for, you know, taking care of seniors.
I have to stop you.
Yeah, we need to nurture what we have.
All right. Well, that time flew by very quickly. We're ready for our closing statements. I have so many questions here I didn't get to ask. Would you like to hear them, even, and then maybe you want to address them? One was about, a couple of them are about streets, one about the intersection at Grand and Signal, offset, difficult pedestrian, difficult for pedestrians. Will you act a remedy? There was another one about streets. It seems like a lot of the city has placed a lot of emphasis on complete streets. That helps change downtown areas, but is neglecting neighborhoods that need sidewalks and some safe majors. Those are some. There is, provide alternatives to tourist-based economy. I think you talked about that. I'm trying to get some that just don't, that you haven't hit on at all. There's quite a bit about short-term rentals. One, the ban on short-term rentals created perhaps 50 additional long-term rentals. There are 1,400 long-term rentals in Ojai. What do you make of this? What do you two do, another, more about drought? What do you do, and what do you intend to do regarding drought and its impact on Ojai? And another question about that. Would you propose that Ojai go to stage-five drought level, or address the water shortage concern some other way? So, that's a lot of questions. I don't think you can answer them all now, but it is your turn to have a closing statement. So, Chris, you get to start.
Okay. All right, well, first off, thank you for everyone for coming. I think you know, our city is a wonderful city, but it's facing some serious challenges. We talked about many of them tonight. We didn't talk much about water, so I'm actually surprised about that. So, I'm going to take a minute in my clothes to do that. So, you know, water, I think, is a multifaceted problem, right? Requires short-term conservation, long-term sustainability, and supply. And, you know, if you look at, I think Souza will say she's a supporter of stage-five today, which would effectively say no outside water use whatsoever. To put that in perspective, engineers, we love to work problems, the biggest problem first, we call it the fat rabbit. In Casitas, 30 customers use almost 400 acre-feet over their allocations. 30 customers. You know, these are ag, commercial, and some residential. That's probably almost as much water as we'd save going to stage-five. So, you know, my view, these problems are complex. We, we need complex solutions. We've got to work on the supply challenge, we've got to work with regional, we've got to work with state agencies. So, there's a clear choice between Souza and I, right? Our issues are bigger than they once were 20 years ago, they're more complex. They need someone who can build consensus, show leadership, and address some of these complex problems that get solved not only here in Ojai, but regionally and through the state.
Sorry, I have to stop you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your com, okay, your turn, Souza.
Okay. To answer the concern about the Grand Avenue intersection, I have looked at that intersection with Caltrans, with two different public works directors, and my understanding is that the city is buying the property on that little lot there, and that intersection is going to get fixed. If I live long enough, it'll get fixed. We've been trying to get it fixed. It's one of the most dangerous intersections in Ojai. And also, I want to assure people that we're not, the Complete Streets Committee is working on the entire city, not just Main Street, but looking at all the residential streets as well. Chris did a great job on, on explaining the complex water situation, and I want to clarify, when I said a stage-five drought, I did not mean stop watering your plants. I meant that people need to start carrying their, you know, water from, they need to do what other countries are doing that use much less water than we do. And they can, we are, I mean, there's a wealth of information on the type, if we, if we water things correctly, our plants and trees do not need to die. And I would like to read a very, something very interesting that applies. We have what's known as a roadmap to sustainability. We should all be familiar with that. I'd like to see that hanging in City Hall.
I need to cut you off, but maybe you could share it outside.
Yes, okay, thank you very much.
Yes. And I want to thank both of you for a very civil evening, and thank all of you for coming. That completes this evening's forum. Isn't that nice? Only in Ojai.
Well, you know, he's my neighbor.